Let go this regular town council meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please? Could I have a roll call, please?
If Dana's not available, I'll just do it from here.
Counselor Goleeb.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Here.
Counselor Bragan.
President.
Counsel Pelletier.
Here.
Counsel Danforth.
Here.
Chair Dumey is here. Counsel Madore.
Here.
Wow, it's like we're all here. Could I please have everybody uncover and take some pledge of allegiance.
My name is the good flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I believe it's a little bit preemptive right now.
Mr. Manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, the one that you and Jane had suggested.
Number nineteen.
Number nineteen, yes.
So number nineteen is going to be removed from the agenda and brought back up at a later date. Can I have the approval of the minutes for October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Goleeb, seconded by Council Madore. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, a double vote. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven zero passage unanimous. So the Council Madore, could you please read the resolve number one dash twenty-three?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolve number one dash twenty-two-three. A proclamation in recognition of honoring the life of Herbert Herbie Clark. Whereas former state representative Herbert E. Clark of Millinocket went home to be with his Lord and Savior on December twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two. Whereas Herbie graduated from Sterns High School, attended the University of Maine at Orno, and served his community, state, and country as a veteran of Vietnam. Served twelve terms in the Maine House of Representatives and retired after working forty-one years and eleven months at Great Northern Paper. And whereas Herbie served his community, the majority of his life in many capacities, being past Chair or Board Member of Todd and Federal Credit Union Board of Directors, past Chair and Member of the Millinocket Town Council, past Grand Night as well as third and fourth degree of the Nysu Columbus Council six-eighty, Board Member of Main Avenue Manor, Board Member of the Millinocket Regional Hospital, and also was a member to the Millinocket AARP Cancer Support Group, American Legion Post eighty, BFW, DAV, and Elks BPoe Lodge fifteen-twenty-one. Whereas Herbie supported his community and love for nature, he was fond of his camp on Amagius Lake, most of all where he enjoyed boating, swimming, fishing, and watching the beautiful sunset. Herbie also enjoyed fishing on the Sata Hung Retirees Campground where he kept his camper. Now therefore be it resolved that the Millinocket Town Council and council assembled on January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three to acknowledge and honor Herbert Herbie Clark in memoriam for his life's accomplishments, dedication, leadership to the people of the state of Maine and of the town of Millinocket as he faithfully discharged his duties of the offices held and served his community, state with loyalty, honor, and integrity.
Second. Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Goleeb. Could I please have a discussion from the council? Counsel Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had the honor of knowing Herbie and attending AARP meetings where he was there regularly. Once I was of age, happily attended those meetings and I fondly remember him because he always called me Janie and always, you know, it said, if there's anything I can do for you, you know, don't hesitate to ask. And little fun fact, we shared the same birthday, so that was always fun. But he will be fondly remembered. He did so much for the community and we all grieve as well.
Thank you, Counsel Danforth. Counsel Madore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have had the honor, the pleasure of knowing Herbie for since I can remember. I was introduced to Herbie by my father, who said, this was one of the really good people in this town. And you need to know him and appreciate him. And through his work with the American Legion especially, Herbie was tireless. But his work in Augusta, his work in Millinocket, his time on the council, his many other times where he gave of his time and effort, sometimes at the point of having to be, I assume, reintroduced to his family a few times to say, hi, I'm your father, or I am your husband, because they hadn't seen him in a while. I know that Herbie was extremely proud of you, Joe, that you followed in his footsteps and served in the legislature. That, I think, was one of his crowning moments, was to watch you follow him into Augusta and on the council as well. Anytime you had anything, whatever it was that you needed, whatever it was that you wanted to find out or whatever, you could call Herbie anytime of the day or night, and he would answer. And it was a matter of just a short amount of time. If he couldn't, didn't know the answer, he would find out for you. Or he would solve the problem, or he would fix it. Millinocket lost really a good person, and people who are that dedicated to public service don't come down the pike very often. I was telling the family, Herbie officiated my first marriage, my first ceremony. And I just saw him and I said, I'm getting married. And he said, really? Who's doing the ceremony? I said, I haven't decided yet. He said, I will. I said, you will? And he said, yeah. He said. And I was one, we were one, I guess I was one of the first ones that he had done. And you couldn't have asked for a better situation and a better ceremony and a better person to do it because he just kept it light and it was one of my more memorable moments. I'm going to miss him very, very much. My condolences go to the family. You have my sympathies. You have my love. Thank you for sharing Herbie with the rest of us. And he will be deeply missed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Madore. Any other council comment? Counsel Goleeb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I never did get the pleasure of meeting him. But I did know Joe and have served him on the council. From what I have heard, Joe of your father, he sounds like the ideal citizen that we should all strive for. And you've certainly carried that on yourself. My condolences to your family, but also glad to celebrate his life here and his accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Goleeb. Counsel Bragan.
This is Chairman asked that we just have a moment of silence for Herbie Clark.
Granted. Thank you, Counsel Bragan. Is there a comment that you'd like to say? Thank you. Counsel Higgins.
I will. I will make a comment. I'm going to tell you a short story about Herbie. That was fun for me when I first ran for council the first time. We're not supposed to do things outside of the voting area and promote ourselves, or however you want to phrase it. And as I was walking out from me voting, it comes Herbie as well passed me, and I think he was with his wife. And I didn't see him coming up behind me, but he went this way and he says, hey, you, the big booming voice. So I turned to him, what? And he goes, I voted for you. Don't let me down. Are you serious? To me, I thought that was a big deal. To me, Herbie Clark was a big deal. There are a few people like that that you come across in life. Herbie, to me, was a once-in-a-generational example to me of what a dedicated statesman should be. And he, everything from what I know of him, of course, this was back in the eighties and early nineties when you're in school and stuff, and there was like two names out there. It was Herbie Clark and Charlie Gray. And those were the types of people that you, if you even considered politics or stayed in the loop of anything, those were the two names that you would always hear in the eighties and the nineties. And to me, he always put his town first, and he put his people first. To me, it was an honor to know Herbie personally when I served with him on the American Legion Boards. He was the service officer for a long time, and I don't know if anybody knows what service officer means, but that means you're the guy that goes out to other people and makes sure that they're okay. You don't hear from somebody for a while, you go check on them. You hear something, that they had something bad happen to them, you go check on them. So Herbie was always that constant contact that somebody, he was always checking on somebody. He always thought of other people himself, other people rather than himself first. And like I said, the things that I'm going to remember from Herb Clark are his big booming voice, and I remember every time that I'd see him, he'd have a very firm handshake. And he was the kind of guy that would look you in the eye when he talked to you. So whether you agreed with him or disagreed with him, I always liked him. And I never, I've never come across anybody yet that didn't like him. To me, he was a guy that put God, put his family, put his friends first. And those are all characteristics that I have seen that's passed on from knowing Joe. Knowing his children and knowing his grandchildren like Mike. I don't think that Herbie could be any prouder of his family than where they have come. And anybody that's ever been to a basketball game that Mike was in, everything else was wrong. You think I could get loud at the refs? That man could get loud at the refs. So Herbie, you know what? To you and your family, I have much respect and like everybody else, you'll be missed. So with that, I'd like to go, if there's nobody from the council that would like to speak, I'd like to go down to the public if anybody has anything they'd like to share on this resolve.
I thank you for honoring Herbie Clark. You know, as, as some of you have said, he was a fortunate person. You know, this community, they're very lucky to have people like Herbie Clark that really led the community and by his dedication to not just Millinocket, but the whole state. And many a time I'd call Herbie and say, I got this problem. No, it's not a problem, we'll fix it. And he would always come back with an answer. When I first ran for school board, I went to Herbie and I said, hey, listen, think about running for school. Any advice? Stay true to your conscience. He said, although sometimes you may not all agree, you're still people and you still respect each other. And I carried that all through my terms on the school board, and I found that to be good advice. As, as you said, he was very, very proud of his family, and he had good reason to be. Joey is an outstanding young man. Michael is just solid as a young man. And Herbie will be missed. The family know we're all praying for him in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else from the public, please come up and speak? Seeing none? Like for this to go to a vote? All those in favor of this resolve? It is unanimous, though. Mike, if I could have the honor of presenting to Joe and
Shirley?
Yeah.
Go look. I can't. I can't get sound. I don't know what's going on. I know, I can see it.
It was an honor to present this to you. Remember it's It's time we want to invite the Clark family to speak at Mike.
Thank you, Counselor Dumey, Chairman Dumey. As a former legislator, this is the first time that I'm back in front of you guys. As a legislative tradition, if we went back in front of our committee, whatever, we're supposed to bring candy. So the next time I see you guys, I'm gonna try to give you guys a bag of candy. But my father was big on tradition and things like that. But on behalf of my family, I just want to thank you and the community and stuff. He installed in me the the points of community service. And how important it is that you never forget your roots. You you're all over this world, either in whatever you do, either you know, the military or your job or school or just going on, you know, a leisure trip. And you come and you meet somebody that either is from Millinocket or knows somebody from Millinocket, was related to somebody from Millinocket. And, you know, you try to make sure that you keep those friendships close and help anyone that you can. And that's something my father really drilled into myself, and I tried to drill that into my son. But the biggest thing, like he said, was community service and help the people. And because, you know, it doesn't hurt you to smile at people. In fact, it takes less muscles to smile than it does to frown. Or have a bad, you know, be negative towards that person. So with that, I just want to say thank you very much. He will be missed. But I remember a lot of people have been telling me, just keep the good memories and the memories that you have of him close to your heart because, you know, he's always there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Right, if there's any other comments from the public? Seeing none? We will now move to the manager's report.
Almost seems inappropriate just to go back to normal business. That's an important and emotional moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the meeting in the month where we got a little further into items from the department. I'll be doing a very high-level overview of this, or there's a lot of information on here. I do encourage those online or anybody who's watching the recording afterwards to go to our website where the meeting documents are posted. Take a, take good, because there's a lot of great information throughout our town. So we have an opportunity ahead of us for moving our online, moving our code permitting application and approvals, whole process through our website. Of course, it wouldn't eliminate the physical aspect of it. That will always be an option. But we are looking at a company called Poly Morphine. It was developed by graduates from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology along with municipal and government employees who have, you know, been through the process and understand what could improve by, you know, the older outdated approaches that had been around. We have a follow-up meeting tomorrow morning. There are several counselors that are interested in joining us. So I'm hoping to be able to bring that forward to, to start introducing that to our town soon. So forward to come on that. I, I do think that it will the convenience of it will certainly increase the amount of permits and permit, permit applications that we see. You know, we all know that for decades, there's work, you know, as extensive as entire garages that are have popped up in our town that are, you know, unpermitted and that plays into our valuation and how far off. So, you know, these things are incredibly important that we get our, get our hands around them. So really appreciate the support of the councils that are interested in that, and I hope that meeting tomorrow goes well. I had recently learned that a few years back, there were several properties that had transferred ownership from the town to individuals with deed stipulations that, that stated the structure needed to be removed from the property. Then one year, some of these date back six or seven and those, those properties still exist on site. So we have taken steps through our journey to regain ownership of those properties. One of them I have learned more information about recently, so exploring that with, with the current property owner to understand and make sure that we make the best decision possible. The support I am looking for of the council is to in support of my plan to regain the ownership of the properties, award through a bid process, a demo service to remove building from the, from the property and then to sell that property for, you know, whatever amount of money we need to put into it to have the dangerous structure. My light research on demo has told me that could be, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollars in investment. And then we're able to turn that around, sell it as a buildable lot. It could be could be good in the long run, could, you know, replace the expenditure and then of course have a new taxable building later on. So our upcoming townwide revaluation, the assessing office has been vigorously preparing for that. Sue Bushard, who works in our assessing office, has been working her way through filing cabinet after filing cabinet and thousands of property card files that were still in the, you know, only in a outdated physical form. She's been working on that for several years, and she is now in the last drawer, finally getting all of our property card information in a digital format in our Trio software, which will make our lives here at the town office much easier. That's a big step in the right direction. She's also preparing all the documentation and, and ordering it in order of the addresses so that the revow team will have a, have an easy go with getting work started. So good news comes with some not-so-great news. It is likely that this process could bleed into a two-year plan instead of original one-year plan. There's a very high demand for that work right now. There are a lot of towns in similar positions or towns that are doing it as they should. There are so many. It kind of all falls now. So with the, you know, with the demand and the backlog from last year, they are going to get started as soon as possible. We expect it in spring. But given their time availability, we, we may see that bleed into a second year. I did have some discussion with Counsel Pelletier recently about potential options that we may be able to provide support internally to speed up the process, so we will be looking at that as well. I had a request of the council to discuss harassment on town employees and public officials. Given some recent legal advice we had received. So I will let the council handle that discussion when they provide comments on the report. I'm going to read a short blurb that I included in my report regarding weather closures. I want to note that it is separate from a bulleted topic above it regarding harassment. That was a question I had received. I had recently closed our office due to the weather forecast. Actually did it again today. And it was, you know, originally this is regarding the Monday closure. Given the information at the time, paired with the knowledge that all state offices, all schools have been closed due to the weather forecast, I felt it was the right decision to make and I stand by it. I realized that snowfall didn't amount to the hype that we were told it was going to be. But I will always err on the side of caution when it comes to storms and safety of our employees and our community members who should not put themselves in danger coming out to, to come to our office if they don't need to. It is irrelevant to me that back in the day, people were made to walk ten miles through several feet of snow uphill both ways. And however you want to phrase it, the world's a different place now. We've learned a lot over the past fifty-plus years. Contrary to popular belief, most of our staff were working remotely that day. And again today, not out enjoying the three-day weekend or any other inaccurate or slanderous claims that were made about us online. One thing I will change moving forward, which implemented for today, was to make sure that when everybody left the night before, they had their office phones, everything they needed with them. We do have a phone system that will work anywhere you plug it in, plug it into power and your ethernet port on your modem at your wireless router at your house, and it works just like it does here in the office. So today we were able to seamlessly help people throughout the day with, with various things. One thing to keep in mind is that when state offices are closed, our hands are tied in many ways of services that we can provide to the community, especially in the way that Bureau Board but I, I just, I will make it very clear that if there is inclement weather and there is dangerous driving conditions, if state offices are closed, if the local schools are all closed, our municipal offices will be physically closed and we will closed, our municipal offices will be physically closed and we will plan to be able, to be available remotely to help you through it. Moving into Public Works, this crew has obviously been very busy with the recent storms in the area, out plowing and, and, you know, cleaning up our sidewalks, sanding the streets, making them as safe as possible. I heard, you know, again today that there's quite a few disgruntled community members and taxpayers, you know, harassing them as they do their jobs. That is really unfortunate, doesn't shine to the way I see our town represented. Few of them have been helping to flood the skating rink with the rec department. We hope that see a good stretch of really cold weather so we can open up that skating rink. You'll see in my report that the sewer clogging is now showing up in our Public Works report here and it has to do with the fact that they run the flusher truck that, that helps unclog those, those jams. So now this, this is really something that affects two of our departments and most recently clogs yet again on Ironbridge Road and a second one on Bob Scott Avenue. This is from people flushing what are advertised as flushable wipes. I've heard everything from a flushable wipe to a, to a bop head, an actual head of a bop flushed into the sewer system causing clogs. Please be smart about what you're flushing your toilets in. Please don't flush things you're not supposed to flush. Some small signs have been hung at the transfer station regarding, regarding the recycling building and the operation there. We are still looking at a way to bring in a much larger sign. But we are encouraging our staff and even our Public Works Director has been there several times to help educate public as they're coming in, try to encourage them to put the things that we can recycle into the recycling building. Have a potential to make money there rather than spend the money. So I highly encourage our community to start recycling the brown cardboard, not the glossy or colored cardboard at the moment. We can also take aluminum pans and plastic jugs. So please keep that in mind and start bringing those as much as you can. Many of the day-to-day things that wastewater are going as they should. See a continuation of mention of extreme floods. This will start to get pricey for us and we will likely have to either start increasing the rate to make up for the increase in people power it takes to, to clean up these situations or potentially find people if, if it's a way that we can track it down. The airport is a busy place. There's, you know, at this, when this report was submitted to me going on a week ago, we had serviced 78 aircrafts this month. Jet fuel sales are coming in significantly higher than expected for the year. So excited about that. In fact, we recently were able to, I say we loosely, Jeff at our airport was able to sell much more than 400 gallons in, in one stop. It was a rather large jet that had been diverted all the way from Portland. They had tried to land at Portland to refuel and they were diverted north. Bangor also couldn't help them on that day, but Jeff Campbell at Millenock and the Municipal Airport was there and ready to service them. Now, the important thing there is, you know, what I'm learning is these jets burn hundreds of gallons of fuel per, you know, minute. I mean, not minute, they, don't read too far into that. They burn fuel very fast and the, the, the only other option was to go as far as Prescott Island. Very likely they wouldn't have made it. Now, the other thing to keep in mind about this is that if the FAA restrictions come to light, that the FAA is threatening our airport with increasing in the size of both length and width, our runways and the removal of our crosswind runway, we would not have been able to serve that jet. The runway would be rendered too small for these things to land. Now that also includes lifelike and other services. So we need to continue to be proactive and I encourage anyone to call and communicate with your legislatures to advocate keeping the size and the length of our runway. It's, it's very crucial to services that we offer and it's very crucial to the future of our town, given the economic development opportunities at place. So great story, shows the need and the worth of our airport and the need to keep the size the way. Our brand spanky new full-time code enforcement officer is really hitting the ground running. He's settling into his position. Going on at the end of the month, you know, he'll be, he'll be a month in. He's really studying our codes and our ordinances, getting comfortable with his approach and understanding the town and the layout. He has already jumped on some of the more important dangerous buildings and derelict properties that were always at the front of our mind, but we really didn't have staff or the capacity to approach them the way that they needed. In his first three weeks, he had already made more progress than had been made in the past with several of those properties. One is on Eastland Avenue. He was able to locate the owner in person and serve them a notice to remove the vehicles and garbage from the lot. So that's an ongoing process, but it's further along than it ever had been in the past. You know, and I, I know that there will be many people along that stretch and anybody who drives up and down Central Street who will really appreciate seeing this work go through. So keep in mind that we are doing these for all of the best reasons. Pee-wee basketball and the rec department has wrapped up. Cheerleading has switched from rec mode to competition mode. The Tri-Town Starlets will compete in the Bangor competition in March. I'll be very excited to go watch my own daughter in that competition. The kids are adorable. They do an incredible job. The coaching staff does great and it's just really cool to see my, my daughter and her friends doing stuff that, that is so interesting to me. I do love that. So within the Community Initiative Director, this is a, this is a lengthy segment, but I'll highlight a few topics here. Recently submitted the EV charging applications with efficiency mains. So goal is to have two chargers with two plugs apiece down Veterans Park. There's potential that we could add another couple over across the street from our municipal building and municipal parking lot. That's an ongoing discussion. Nothing has been solidified here. She's also submitted to the Gloria McKenzie Foundation for funds that would go towards our ski toe project. Really, really anxious to get the funding going for that so we have the rope toe set up and all the great stuff that's going on. She also played a big role in planning and hosting a spaghetti supper recently that was to raise fund for the Millenock and Fire EMS Outreach and Prevention Fund. Sevita Health played a big role in that. Chief Malcolm and Assistant Chief Cody. I played a minor role myself. It was a, it was a wonderful evening with great conversation around subject of substance use disorder and resources available on our community. Several people who either experienced substance use disorder or were affected others by substance use disorder got up and spoke. I am one of the people that got up and spoke, told a bit about my own story, always hoping to encourage others to reach out and break down the stigma around that. We have a lot of credible support in our, right here in our own community. You know, people tend to look to the local government to do something about it. In reality, the local government cannot actually do something about it, but we can help drive the conversation and we can help make that a more comfortable thing. So our town has the utmost respect for that and I hope that we can continue to break that barrier for other folks in our community who are affected and, and may need to speak about it. On a lighter note with Community Initiative Director, many are familiar with our newsletter and the email communication that we were able to start several months ago. So one hot topic that the council was on around that time was, was supporting us to go for the ability to send text messages. So we now have that ability. We were able to add that to our existing plan, you know, right within that department budget and find that was already created. So we are working on growing that list of contacts. This is very similar to what the school would use to announce snow days or, you know, closures for any reason or important things like the election, important meetings coming up. So we'd really encourage everybody in our community who has a mobile phone, cellphone, who would like to receive these important messages from our community, reach out to the, reach out to CID at millenocket.org. That's Amber Wheaton. Her contact information can be found on our website as well as at the bottom of our Magic City Monthly that with the email accounts. Yes, sir. All as well in the text clerk department. Reminder that, you know, refresh your dump sticker, get your dogs licensed. The late fee starts as of February 1st. That's an additional $25 on, on the dog license. Also letters were sent out by town clerk, I believe just yesterday regarding the much needed address changes that were made recently on Midway Road. So, and there will be several erodes over the next year or so that we need to bring up to par with the 911 emergency system that, you know, something again that had been neglected for probably a couple of decades at least. But we're at a point now where it's a demand that we need to comply to this. So, you know, we really have no say in the matter. But those whose addresses do need to change also need to update their voter registration and their automobile registration as well. So please, we, we ask for your patience as we work through some of those things. Like I said, the first batch on Midway Road had received that or will be receiving that message within the next few. Lots of great things happening in our fire and ambulance, public health and safety department. You know, it never ceases to amaze me when I, when I learn new things. You know, recent, I, in this, this month's report, I'm learning that they're inspecting, they expected a pellet stove installation for a resident. I just think that's, that's a great service that we offer and, and highlight that. So when you're installing new wood stoves or pellet stoves, you know, contact us and somebody from that department will be able to inspect that and make sure it's unsafe. A lot of new training options coming up from, being put into place by our new Assistant Chief, Mr. Cody. I understand there's a new, John, can you tell me the name of the program that's starting again?
Yes, we're going to begin a, we get a basic fire school. So it's about a 12 session. So it's about 80 hours long roughly. We've opened that up to their mutual aid communities as well. So it's a way for us to get some of the volunteers trained to go inside a fire. So excited to get that going, which is going to begin early there next month. So they'll receive a, receive a certificate from the main community college, main fire servicing institute. So give them, you know, up to where they need to be at this point.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate you getting up on the spot like that. I couldn't come up with the phrase in my head. You know, on top of that, you know, it's noted in here that John and Second Assistant Chief Barrington have conducted this snow sled rescue training for the fire department as well. They do have a snow sled that they're able to use for rescue out on the trail, the lakes that throughout the winter. So it's good to press that and we appreciate both Assistant Chief Cody and Second Assistant Chief Barrington for putting on that, that training. We have the police department report attached and the Millenock Municipal Library report attached. I do want to note that Ms. Furukawa from library will be here at our next meeting on February 9th to do that quarterly update that she provides. So with that said, I will end there and I will take any questions or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any council discussion on the manager's report, Council of Dor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the property repossessions, I, I support the actions going forward. I however, hope that they're taken by a case-by-case basis and considerations, every, every avenue and every consideration possible to work with the people whose homes were going through repossession or may go through repossession. Every option is, is utilized so that there can be no regrets or actions coming back against the town in Millenocket for that. But I do agree that it needs to be done and I'm glad to see the manager on top of it. The revow updates, I want to go ahead and say thank you, Sue. She is an absolute gem here in the office and she does incredible work and she is probably one of the most pleasant people to be around and her, again, other person has a tremendous work ethic and we wouldn't be anywhere near close to this without her. So thank you very much for, to Sue Bushard for that. The transfer station, we, like I say, we need to go ahead and get information out as far as what can and what cannot be recycled so that we know that, have a better idea for the general public. I mean, people had an education at one time and when we did recycle everything and now we have selective recycling and they need to know what that is and how much they can take and what needs to be done so that we can get the stuff out of the hopper and into the recycling building that needs to be so we can get some revenue from that. I'm glad to see that the audit is going to go through and the, the town's assessor is working on the eval. I think that's going to be very important. Congratulations to the airport for another good report and keeping up a steady, you know, showing that our faith in the airport as a economic driver is not misplaced. Jeff has done very well out there and he should be applauded for his actions, I think. And I think the manager is right. I think we all need to go ahead and start maybe even having the council as a whole draft a letter to delegation, giving our, our feelings about not closing the crosswind runway, not shortening the runways. As a matter of fact, if anything, expanding or lengthening the runway, our main runway and helping us with, because we are a vital cog. You take between Bangor and Prescott Isle, we're basically it as far as being able to handle jets like this that, you know, have, and this is not the first time that's happened. So I think that we serve a vital service and I think more effort needs to be put into telling the other, you know, giving our story out to the delegation. So I would ask that the council draft a letter, the sign, to send to our federal representatives to go ahead and work on our behalf. I don't know what to do with the complaints as far as the sewers are concerned. I mean, we've done everything. We've got the message out there. I don't know what's going on, but hey, it is what it is and I'm sorry to see it. If, if the fees go up, we have nobody to blame but ourselves for, for not better taking care of not flushing things down our sewer line. I wanted to point out too, that the second half property taxes are due by the 29th of January and And I'd like to see people go ahead and pay their taxes on time so that they don't go ahead and get any late fees or anything going along with that. Same thing with licensing your dog. Not very big expenditure, but still, I don't see people having to go ahead and have the late fee and pay the twenty-five dollars to register the dog after the fact. Kudos to the fire department. Again, I, I like the way in the direction the department's going. I like the reports. I like to hear that I think the department is doing well and moving forward in a very positive manner. And I give credit to the entire staff, especially, you know, our chief and our assistant chief. Moving the department forward and I look forward to even hearing more about more things happening there. The police department, it's always, calls are just constant. I was sorry to see the resignation of Officer Guyberson. I think he does a great job in the community and I was sorry to see him go. But people come and people go out of, out of law enforcement and it's what it is. So I'm glad to see they're getting somebody in his place. Other than that, I'm all set with just about everything else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Madore, Council Pelletier.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. On the property possession, I certainly, comments by Council Board and revale. I'm in hopes that we can get as much as possible done coming here. So that the following year can all be even across the community. Oh, the harassment of town employees, I, I really need to be doing something regarding that. I don't know exactly what, but serving papers on people that, you know, reprimanded for their actions. There should be some kind of bill. And I'm agreeing with most comments made by Council Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The main point that I wanted to be put on here, and I think it should be short and sweet. I don't think there's much more to say about it than what we've already covered in our last meeting. But it's important that our staff and the town and the officials for the town should not expect harassment at their workplace. That means showing up at a counselor's place of work and bringing things to their attention in a way that's not civil, that disrupts their job, that's harassment. We're all here obviously to serve the public and have no issue with taking any kind of complaints, criticisms, ideas, thoughts. But there is a line in which if it's crossed, we are gonna be taking this very seriously, especially following some of the incidences with Public Works experiencing some pretty severe behavior from members of the public. So we will be taking real steps to ensure legally that we're all protected and that we can act civilly together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Town Manager for his report and for all the departments that have reported in on it. A lot of good things going on throughout the community and want to thank everybody for the work that they do. The polymorphic for the permitting online, I think that's gonna be an asset. If we do go down that road, because it's gonna help people that can't get in here to get a permit during, during the day if they're working. They'll be able to do it online. I think that will reflect in the amount of permits you'll see. As far as the harassment and that stuff going, that was going on, we all need to remember that, just like Council Goleeb said, that we are public officials. We are in the limelight. There's no doubt about that. I mean, they hear our names, they see our faces all the time. People are going to continue to jab at us, banter, taunt. But we need to remember that there is a difference between that bantering and taunting and the harassment. But in the businesses we're in, we also have to have a thick skin as well. We shouldn't take it personally, but there is a difference between the bantering and harassment. At a person's home, job site, place of work, there's a time and a place and there's a way to do it. Thank you.
Council Higgins, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to thank Jeff. He's done a fantastic job. Like Council Madore said, I think he's doing great. I'm full support of a letter to the delegation. And I think the story that the manager gave us today is a great focal point that we should include in that letter. Given that they could have been in an emergency situation and not been able to land at our airport. So I think that is a great focal point that should be, should be brought to the delegation. Online permitting, have always said that I like to say that we're bringing Millenock into the twenty-first century. I think Peter and his team have done a fantastic job of doing that. It's very, very, very much needed. And as he said, you know, there are always gonna be the options to do it in person. So it doesn't eliminate the old methods either. With the sewer lines, we are streaming on Facebook now. We are having viewers. So I'm hoping that that will also get the, the word out. So I hate to say that we've reached our limits, but hopefully, you know, being optimistic, we do, we do get something out of it. As for the weather, Peter, your decision was absolutely valid. In college, I experienced a situation where the school didn't close for the day and one of my teachers had passed away on her way to school because they didn't close the school. Nobody's life is worth going to work. No amount of money can make me believe it's worth going to work in that kind of a situation, period. So I am in full support of what you did. Last is the harassment. For transparency reasons, I was the counselor that was harassed at work. I have an open door policy for anybody in the tri-town area if they want to have a conversation with me, but not at my place of work. Extremely uncalled for. Thick skin, I agree. I did ask this individual to leave multiple times and I'd have a conversation with them after. He'd call me, come to my house and have tea with him, you know, whatever was the case. And I agree. We should have thick skin, but there is a fine line between harassment and politics. So again, I ask everyone, for all of us in the council, if you do have something that you want to say to us, you know, call us, leave us a voicemail. If we don't get to you right away, it's probably because we're working and we're busy, you know. I, I will always call you back. I make that a first effort that I do when I get off work is I check my voicemails to see who's called me. So again, I'm going to start taking harassment very seriously. It's not okay to do it at anybody's workplace. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. I'm just gonna feed off what other counselors have spoken about. And I appreciate hearing the stories about the airport. We have a lot of great things going on in the airport. It is a huge resource. So if advocating to our federal delegation is our next step to make sure we keep the airport as is. Let's do what we can and let's start getting some letters going and figuring that part out. So I'm all for that. And I didn't notice, and thank you. I did, I, I participated in eating spaghetti. So I participated. I went to the community dinner as well as a couple of other counselors here. And that was very well attended and I appreciate your attendance and to continue to bring the topic up at our meetings. So we are, we want to become a recovery-ready community. We have resources here and we need to continue to keep talking about it. So thank you for speaking about that and including that in your manager's report. Sort of other good news, I say good news out of the East Millenock Police Department. Notable items that were mentioned in here, that Officer Clayton has been accepted in the Drug Recognition Expert School and only twelve to fifteen officers is selected to go to that training. So congratulations to her. So I appreciate that she's taken that step and wants to do that for the community. And we need her and her training and dedication. So I just wanted to shout out and kudos to the police department and that she's stepping up in that big way. And I look forward to Diana Furukawa giving our update library report next time. She's got some great information in here and they've hired another part-time resource navigator to join one they already have. So lots of good things are happening with Mobilize Guitad and that aspect, that program of the library. But she will fill us in and tell us more next time. I look forward to that. Thank you for your comprehensive report.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Yes, Council Goleeb.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. I agree a hundred percent with what Council Higgins said about that line of what's harassment and not. I also want to point out that just because we are public officials does not grant people the license to behave disrespectfully or to bash us unnecessarily, or anyone else for that matter. We are all here getting paid a thousand dollars a year, literally to serve the community and we have nothing that we're hiding. We're the most open, transparent group of people that I've met in government. We're not influenced by party politics. We don't have huge funders controlling what we're doing. We're average, everyday people who live here in town, who are trying to benefit the community. If that could please be respected and so people can talk courteously, nicely, that's how things actually change and happen positively in town. We just spoke about someone who lost their life, a very important figure in town who set an example of how people should behave. About acting respectfully, being kind to one another. And clearly, he had a great impact on the community. Everyone thinks very highly of him and I think we should all act in a very similar manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Goleeb.
I just very quickly wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we do have an ongoing conversation with representation from our delegation regarding our airport. We do have the support of all of them and their staffers. So far, the conversation has included just myself and Jeff from the airport. We would love to see the support network start to spread out. We would love to see more letters and phone calls coming in so that we can encourage them to do what they can to influence the FAA to, to change their decision on the size restrictions of our runway. There's a, the worst piece of all of this is that they base these decisions off numbers from specific years. And, you know, it cycles around so often. Well, Millenock's cycle showed up to register as two thousand twenty. You look at the years leading up to two thousand twenty, traffic increasing, 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 sizes increasing, services offered increasing. Two thousand twenty, what happened? Everything standstill. So the FAA is using numbers off two thousand twenty to, to direct their decision-making on whether or not they should let us expand, keep the same size or restrict. What they're, what they're recommending is that we would, we wouldn't even be able to host life flight. So keep that in mind when you're doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anybody else try, try to wrap it up? Alright, so I guess I'll go. Do you want them to go first? So on the property repossessions, I support the manager on what you're doing. I also support if we want to instruct a letter to the delegation to make it come from the council. I agree with most of what Council Higgins has said, so I won't touch on that. Except for briefly. Really don't care what people have to say about me. You want to say it to me, say it to me. There was an individual that came in to my place in employment last week and accosted one of the employees there. And that was all over the decision of who got awarded the, the the property the last council meeting. So I mean, these are things, we're only gonna make fifty percent of the people happy. The other fifty are gonna be unhappy. Comes with the territory, like they said. As long as you're speaking truthful about me, there's a lot of, go ahead and do it. I don't, try not to pay attention to Facebook too much. And from a good friend and colleague, former colleague of mine, it's, it's, you can't win every battle. So don't even try. I mean, if somebody's running their mouth about you, just let them run it. Gonna take the high road at some point. So, but yeah, you shouldn't be going to people's employment, shouldn't be going to people's homes. There's avenues in contact. If that's the way they choose and they get courage enough to do that, to be courteous. And you can disagree in a respectful manner. I'll, I'll just leave that at that. Anybody down in the public, we're gonna try to keep people's comments to two minutes if you can. So anybody from the public want to speak on the manager's report? Ms. Sullivan via Zoom.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. I absolutely agree that counselors should be respected and not expect harassment. I also think that that goes both ways. Residents should also be respected. And that's it for that. I do have a question. The reevaluation that is being talked about, at one time you had talked about doing like with a drone and then matching things up. And is this going to be a full reevaluation? Or is it going to be done in, where they actually knock on the door and go through the houses? Or is this going to be done in some other manner?
This will be people in person evaluating each property throughout the town. We have been informed that within our budget, we will be able to do an interior valuation as well. So we're hoping that people play nicely with us throughout that process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Anybody else from the public have a comment on the manager's report? Seeing none. Order number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, approval from the town warrants for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. Providing for excuse for the town warrant for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Disorder the town warrant for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, forty-three cents is approved.
Second. Motion made by Council Pelletier, second by Council Bragdon. Any council discussion?
Any hitters? Two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars fifty-seven cents for ambulance medical billing. Eight thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars forty-eight cents Bangor Savings Bank, the loan payment. Eight thousand four dollars eighty-one cents for GNT West, half of the loader, motor repair. Rather, for the motor, not, no, no repair costs there. Two thousand thirty-one dollars fifty cents for Main Technology Group, that's our administrative computers. Eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars thirty-six cents for street paving. Sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars for Northern Timber Cruisers. That's the that we recently passed an order on. Four thousand eighty-four dollars five cents for the oil company. Nine thousand seven thirty-four dollars ninety-seven cents for Versant Power. Two thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars ninety cents for witness two-way service, and those are very old and tired of it.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Any other council comment? Seeing none down in the public? Back to the council, all those in favor? Seven zero. Order number sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. Councilor Bragdon, would you please read it?
Order sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for January twenty-second, twenty twenty-three in the amount of fifty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seven cents is hereby approved.
Second. Motion made by Council Bragdon, seconded by Council McDor. Any heavy hitters?
Forty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars to Guitad Motors, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents to the town of Millinocket. Three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents to Pierce Atwood LLP. And five thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents to Versant Power.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. Council discussion? Seeing none down in the public? Back to the council, all those in favor? Pass at seven zero. Order number seventeen dash twenty twenty-three. Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number seven.
Order number seventeen, twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of the application for an attainment license for Hang Wong Chinese Restaurant. It is ordered the detached application for attainment licenses hereby approved for Yang Danagai, nine seventy-three Central Street, Millinocket, doing business at Hang Hong Wang Yang Corp, Hang Wong Chinese Restaurant, nine seventy-three Central Street, Millinocket.
Second. Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Danforth. Council discussion? Seeing none down in the public? And back to the council, all those in favor? Pass at seven zero. Order number eighteen dash twenty twenty-three, Council Bragdon, would you, Council Higgins, sorry, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number eighteen, twenty twenty-three, providing for the approval of the application for malt, Dennis, and purchase liquor license for Hang Wong Chinese Restaurant. It is ordered the detached application for malt, Dennis, and purchase liquor license be approved for Hang Hong Yang Corporation. Nine seventy-three Central Street, Millinocket, PBA Hang Wong Chinese Restaurant, nine seventy-three Central Street, Millinocket.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Goldie. Council discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Council McDor.
I don't know if the other councilors read through these applications to any extent, but I don't think I've ever come across a, a liquor application where, where it says list the names and addresses of five previous years for title holders, and this one has the previous five years as main city. No actual city it stated on here, main city between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-three. Also, where it says residence address on all the above for five previous years, two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three, be or main. This is, I, I am surprised that this application has gotten this far considering those, and they may be considered minor omissions, but still I, I would think that putting down the, your address for the last five years, it would not be hard, that's where you live. And I, I find the application incomplete. So, I don't know what the councilors are going to want to do about it, but I just, this is the first time I've come across anything like this as far as an application is concerned, and I find it odd. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council McDor. Any other council discussion? Council Goldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree it is odd. That unfortunately is a state process. So, the state approves that liquor license based upon the information that's provided. We don't really have any say in that process. Thank you.
A question for clarification. This is a state document, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Looking at it, I recognize it from when I worked in your district's office.
If I, if I may, I can clarify.
Thank you, Madam Clark.
This application, I do apologize for the dogs going off, this application will go to the state. So, once approved by the town council, when the business owner picks it up, I can let her know that there is the concern and that you most certainly, we can make those changes. But this application will be approved or not approved by the state. It just needs the councilor's permission and acceptance of their availability to sell liquor in Millinocket.
Question for you, Madam Clark. Is there any penalty or any obligation or responsibility to the council to make sure the information is correct on here?
Absolutely not. You're just signing off as permissions that the council does approve that they are a business to be located in Millinocket too south and serve.
Thank you very much. I'm satisfied with that. Does anybody else have any questions for Madam Clark? Alright, so any other council discussion? Down to the public? Seeing none, let's call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, seven zero. Moving to order number twenty dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read, I mean, Council Higgins, would you please read? No, sorry, I switched it. Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number twenty dash twenty twenty-three, providing for acceptance of donation of updated signage along the Mission Trail. Whereas the Age Friendly Committee of the Town has a goal to improve access to and increase use of in-town paths and trails. And whereas an activity of the Age Friendly Committee was to assess the need and secure funding to make changes along the Mission Trail to make it more age-friendly. And whereas, as, whereas a lifelong Maine AmeriCorps member in collaboration with the Age Friendly Committee conducted a walking audit of the trail and identified ways to increase awareness and use of the trail by adding wheelchair and stroller icons to the existing signs. And whereas the lifelong Maine AmeriCorps member secured a five hundred and fifty dollars grant funding through the Maine State Walking College to purchase new signs with the agreement that the Public Works Department would provide installation in the spring of twenty twenty-three. And whereas the new signs will be the same color, format, and look of the original signs, but be upgraded to highlight the trail's accessibility for wheelchairs and strollers. It is therefore ordered that the town council accepts the donation and installation agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Bragdon. Council discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as it states in the order, this was something that we did through the Age Friendly Committee. On the next page, you'll see there's sort of a mock-up of the Mission Trail sign, how it will be. It's sort of a crude mock-up and look, how it will be changed, it'll be the same look. But after, if there's any other council discussion on it, I know when we go to the public, Barbara is on Zoom and perhaps might want to speak to this, and she was the one that did the walking audit and received the grant for this.
Would anybody be opposed if I allow, what's your name, Barbara? Barbara to go and you can get some information from her? Opposition, Barbara, would you like to speak, please?
Sure, just briefly, I would like to thank Louis Pelletier for walking with me and traversing the trail and pointing out deficiencies. And we had a good time on that, and I'm very excited about spreading the word. I really love that trail, and I actually do a walking group in the spring, summer, and fall, and, and getting to know people through that walk and getting, encouraging people to use it. So, we also have another grant in process requesting money for additional benches and maybe a picnic table, so, and solar lighting. So, it's a real jewel of the community, and I'm looking forward to getting that work done. And thank you, Jane, for all your encouragement with that.
Thank you, Barbara. Back to the council. Council comment? Seeing none down in the public? Back to the council, all those in favor? Seven zero. Order number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three, Council Goldie, would you please read?
Yes, sir. Order number twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, providing for expanding funds from economic development for GIS mapping services. Whereas the town of Millinocket had arranged for GIS mapping services of town maps in two thousand nineteen. And whereas the project had not been completed or paid for prior to the end of that fiscal year, but has been revived and is ready to be completed, it is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorizes the treasurer to remit payment for these services in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars from Budget Line zero one one five three seven seven eight Economic Development to Lat Long Logic LLC for the completion of this work. Note Phase One invoice and related email correspondence from twenty twenty attached as backup.
Motion made by Council Goldie, seconded by Council McDor. Council discussion?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, is this the budget line that we set aside twenty-five thousand four for the year?
It is. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Will you leave any other council comment? Seeing none down in the public? Back to the council, all those in favor? Pass at seven zero. Reports of Communications, Warrant Committee for February ninth, twenty twenty-three will be Council Danforth and Chair DuMay. Council Committee reports at this time. Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have an Age Friendly Committee meeting last week, on the seventeenth. We recapped our successes of last year, so we're working on a progress report. When I get that done, I'll post it to our committee, our committee tab on our website. There are a couple of priorities that we are going to focus on this year that I wanted to be able to share with the council and the community. We're going to establish a task force to start a handy helpers program. We know that it's something that's needed, and it would be for small home repairs for folks or yard work, that sort of thing. It's come up time and time again, over and over again, and so we're just ready to start, establish a task force. So, stay tuned for more information. We're going to need people on that committee to make that happen. The other thing that's going to happen this year as well is we're going to formalize a call-in check-in program. Perhaps, we don't know what it's going to be called, but it's going to come out of our fire department, our fire EMS department. Thankfully, both chief and the assistant chief attended that meeting, and, you know, we learned it's something they do informally now, and they would look to formalizing that in the future and get more people or more people enrolled in the program in a more formal way. So, it was brought to our attention that, and I knew this, it happened across the state, but I guess across the county, there's a lot of, whether it's called good morning calls, friendly caller programs, caring calls, so that we can be in touch with our community members that are living alone and making sure that they're okay. So, stay tuned for more of that information on that. We won't have a February meeting because we're going to encourage all of our committee members to participate in the snowdown. That's going to happen Sunday, February nineteenth during part of winter fast, and so we'll get out some promotion of that. So, some good things coming out of your Age Friendly Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. It never gets old hearing from the Age Friendly Committee. Any other council comment for chair committees? Council Goldie.
Thank you. The Economic Development and Sustainability Committee will be scheduling a time fairly soon. Because they're joint committees, there's people coming to present at the next one, and we're going over enough issues where we'll have a fuller room than usual. We're scheduling a date to hold it here. It'll also be available on Zoom, just like all the other committee meetings. So, keep posted. It gets posted on our Facebook page, on the town website, and posted here in the town hall as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to add one thing. I have directed the Council Goldie and his committee to look at the bid process one more time. We're going to be going over that. I don't know if it's going to be on his agenda for this one or, or following, you say following, what is it, this one? So, everybody, please, I encourage people, we need some input. We'd love to have public input on this. There's a lot of passion around this, a lot of different ideas. So, if you feel that strongly about it, come to the next committee meeting that he's setting up. Voice your opinions, voice your concerns. We'll take all of that into consideration. I plan on being there myself. I think that the process can be done better, and that's our goal for, that's my goal for that to happen. And then he can come back with the committee report and recommendations. The only other thing that I have to add is I've asked the, the town manager, I think starting next month, he's going to be putting in a column in the newspaper. It's something that used to be done. It's something that I would like to see him get back to as another form of media. There's still thousand, twelve hundred people or so that still read the local paper and get their information that way. So, I think that his report, there's going to be a lot of things from the manager's report and other issues around town that that I think can be addressed in that column. So, stay tuned for that as well. Anybody have anything else? So, with that, going to go to public comment. Please keep it to two minutes left. Chief Malcolm.
Paul Malcolm, Seventy-three School Street, Fire Chief and Health Officer. I just want to remind the public that I was out today doing some riding around the community, and please don't bury your fire hydrants, you know, seconds count if we have to, to hook up hydrants for, by the fire at your own. I was very disappointed to see some completely buried. And, you know, we just can't have that. We've had that in the past. I just please urge everybody to make sure that you keep your hydrants cleaned out. It's actually an ordinance not to, against a hybrid. And the other thing, our streets are getting very narrow. We get a lot of snow quick. Public works doing all they can do, but you leaving your car side the road, not putting it in your driveway, narrows the street up. Fire trucks need a lot of room to move around, and please try to remember that and not leave the vehicle side the road so they push the banks back so that we can, we'll be able to get in. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm.
Council Bragdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just adding on to your point, on my way to work, I saw a dozen flowers plowing across the roadway. One that was doing it right on top of the fire hydrant, so that's another point I saw posted on Facebook about not doing that. It's a state law. If I'm not mistaken, you can't do that, so just a reminder, don't fly across the road.
Thank you, Council Bragdon. Any other public comment? Seeing none, you have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Council McDor, seconded by Council Goldie. All in favor? Seven zero. Out by seven.
Voting the time as six fifty-eight.
I'll split it with you, Lori.